Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council. Mayor Teresa Tomlinson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District One. Glenn Davis, District Two. Bruce Huff, District Three. Evelyn Turner-Pugh, Mayor Pro Tem and District Four. Mike Baker, District Five. Gary Allen, District Six. Mimi Woodson, District Seven. Walker Garrett, District Eight. Judy Thomas, Post Nine at Large Counselor. Annie Washington, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council.
Good evening. And welcome to the June 5th, 2018 City Council Resolution Session and Proclamation Session. The mayor is out of town. I'm Evelyn Turner-Pugh, Mayor Pro Tem and Counselor District Four. First thing, we would ask Minister Vanessa Thorp from Greater Mount Zion Baptist Church if she would come forward, please. Good evening.
Good evening.
May we bow our heads? Our Father which art in heaven, we hallow and we bless your name on today. We thank you for this time that you've presented unto us in God. We come first of all asking you to come into this meeting and to help us and guide us as we do our business with the city council. And we also thank you, Lord God, for the ones that will be recognized today for the government, their achievement, their service, and all of their time that they've rendered. Father God, we just ask you to have your way in this service and in this meeting and ask you, Lord God, to just continue to lead us and guide us and bless us as only you can do in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Minister Thorp. And also thank your congregation for us too, please. Now, if you will stand with me, we ask the Springer Theatre Academy to come forward and they will lead us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.[182.01][182.01](applause)
Don't leave.
Counsel, can I introduce us?
Yes, please.
My name is Sally Baker and I'm the academy director and education director at the Springer. And these fourteen students represent about seven hundred that we'll have over the course of this summer at the Springer Theatre Academy. That represents all schools in our district as well as four states and three countries. Thank you. And we are a young actor training program for students five to eighteen years old. And it's the best program you can find in the southeast. But I think what makes the Springer unique and our program unique is our approach to education. And I've asked the students just to think about one of two questions. So I want, not everybody's going to talk, we'll just take just a minute. But I wanted to hear from you guys. What is the thing about academy that is your favorite? If you want to answer, let me know.
The Springer is definitely a place of acceptance and that's something I really value.
The Springer is a place where like you get accepted and they love you. They just, if you ask them anything, they got your back.
The Springer is really challenging and it pushes me forward.
I like about this Springer that everyone's excited there and will all love them.
The Springer, you always feel accepted and you could always be yourself. Don't try to be someone you're not.
Good. I'm going to hold you there and Patrick, you get the next question. Next question is, our philosophy is life skills through stage skills. So even though we are the best theater program around, we are not shy about introducing those life skills that we know if students go on to be attorneys or garbage men or librarians and not actors, they will have the skills to make them better ones of those by their time at the Springer. So what life skill do you think the Springer has really emphasized in your life, Patrick?
I find the life skill of public speaking and group work to be extremely important. Working in the community, you need to be able to engage and work with people and that's what I've learned at the Springer Theatre Academy.
I've learned through stage skills and life skills that you don't need to fit in to, you just be yourself, be yourself. That's the main thing.
Say one more answer maybe from, maybe on this side. Oh, Theo, Theo, go ahead.
Fail boldly.
Yeah.[342.84][342.84](laughing) Anybody else?
Always trust your instincts, to never think, just do, and that it's okay if you fail the first time, that there's always a second time, and that your teammates are always going to back you up.
Good. And we'll end with Noel.
It taught me how to make friends because I am a very shy person. So it taught me how to work together as a group and there is no leaders. Your partner is the most important.
Thank you so much, guys, for being here. And counsel, thank you for your support of the Springer Theatre Academy. We didn't know that Mayor Tomlinson wasn't going to be here today, but Ms. Turner-Pugh, we have a little gift for Ms. Tomlinson. As you can see, they're wearing the Springer uniform and they just got done with the whole day of academy. So we have an academy tee shirt for Mayor Tomlinson because she has, over her terms, supported the Springer and we wanted to thank her for supporting the State Theater of Georgia. Thank you.
We'll see that she gets it. And can you, one of them say their names, please?
Sure.
Noel.
Larkin.
I'm Haley Larkin.
I'm Campbell.
I'm Colin Schub.
Michaela Miller.
My name is Louise Fosse.
My name is Taylor.
My name is Adama Sal.
My name is Katie Schub.
My name is Arturo Serrano Torres.
My name is Mag McPherson.
My name is Theo Pound.
My name is Annabelle Miller.
My name is Patrick Chappell.
My name is Charles McPherson.
And your name?[444.12][444.12](applause)
And my name is Sally Baker.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being with us today and come back anytime.
Thank you. All right, guys.
We will now go into our proclamation session. And our first proclamation will be by Counselor Judah Thomas, Neighborhood Works Columbus Week.
I thought I saw Ms. Williams back there.
There she is.
Good afternoon.
Thank you and welcome to the council meeting.
It's with a deal, good deal of pleasure, excuse me, that I read this proclamation for Neighbor Works. Whereas National Neighbor Works Week was initiated in 1984 by a United States Congressional Resolution, co-sponsored by more than two hundred and sixty members of Congress and signed by President Ronald Reagan. And whereas the formal introduction of National Neighbor Works Week occurred in the spring of 1986 and began an annual national celebration held the first through the second Saturday in June. Whereas National Neighbor Works Week is a celebration of neighborhood pride and unity among organizations in more than twenty-five hundred urban, suburban, and rural communities across the country. And whereas National Neighbor Works Week celebrates the efforts of local organizations working with partners and volunteers to create healthier communities. And whereas Neighbor Works Columbus, a Neighbor Works America organization, has worked in Columbus for more than fifteen years and has assisted nearly fifteen hundred families in becoming homeowners. Now therefore Teresa Pike Tomlinson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim the week of June 2nd through the 9th, 2018 as Neighbor Works Columbus Week. Congratulations.
Thank you.[586.91][586.91](applause) Thank you very much. We're proud to join our two hundred and thirty-eight sister organizations throughout this country as we bring a focus to the issue of affordable housing and healthy communities throughout this country. We're proud to be a partner with the city of Columbus and have been since the inception in the year of 2000, largely under Counselor Pugh's leadership. And so it has been a joy and we look forward to continuing our impact, which through the end of last year, our impact has leveraged one hundred and sixty-seven million dollars in this community and we're very proud of that. So thank you very much for this recognition, I appreciate it.
And Ms. Williams, come around so we can shake your hand, but I want to say personally thank you for sticking in with us. I often tell people, Columbus is so blessed because we have so many organizations that's about helping others. And this is one that's very, really goes out of their way to help people get, have affordable housing. Our next proclamation will be by Counselor Mike Baker, G. William Handel Day.
Let's see, is Mr. Handel and his group here? Anybody else you want to bring up, any family relatives? Come on up, Mr. Handel. Okay, welcome, thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to read the proclamation into the record today.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for coming.
Whereas G. William Handel is the founder of GW Handel Design, a Columbus, Georgia-based international multi-specialty design, branding, strategic communications, business development, consumer product development, and digital development firm, serving public and private organizations on four continents. And whereas G. William Handel has successfully developed, branded, funded, and launched well over thirty consumer products, technologies, and service-oriented organizations and startups. And whereas in 2004, G. William Handel co-founded, launched, and led a clinical provider organization, a nationally-recognized clinical research organization, and a biotechnology company responsible for developing pioneering clinical artificial intelligence-driven diagnostic decision support technology. That, as a result, has facilitated access to higher quality of care for tens of thousands of patients. And whereas in 2009, G. William Handel and his team were invited to testify before Congress concerning a biotechnology platform he co-developed in the private health sector to better diagnose military combat veterans returning with post-traumatic stress and traumatic brain injuries. And whereas G. William Handel serves on the Columbus, Georgia Film Office, the Uptown Columbus Board of Directors, the Columbus Enterprise and Culture Work Group, Select Committees for Columbus 2025, Chairman of the Village Creed Board of Advisors, the Columbus Branding Task Force in conjunction with the Columbus Convention and Visitors Bureau, and the Greater Columbus, Georgia Chamber of Commerce. And whereas in 2017, G. William Handel was awarded the Presidential Lifetime Achievement Award for his volunteer and philanthropic work aimed at assisting inventors and entrepreneurs across the nation. And whereas G. William Handel has demonstrated a personal and professional commitment to building stronger communities by bringing innovative solutions, inventions, and economic development to life, as well as through fostering future generations of entrepreneurs, innovators, and business leaders. Now therefore Teresa Pike Tomlinson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, June 5th, 2018 as G. William Handel Day. Congratulations.[820.51][820.51](applause)
You can say something if you like.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you for your leadership and your honorable service across our city and our region. Distinguished council members, thank you for your individual and collaborative leadership as well. Our community is a better place because of all of you. I'm extremely humbled to be standing here before you today and grateful to the city of Columbus for this great honor. I am so proud to call Columbus home. I would also like to recognize and thank my spouse and my mom and pop who joined me here today, my family, my staff, and my colleagues. I want to take this opportunity to pay tribute as well to my recently departed grandmothers who have helped impart a sense of duty in me that will always be a guiding force in my life. I'd like to dedicate this proclamation to the wonderful individuals and the organizations that we have the privilege of serving. Service to others is taught at home and from there it's carried forward into every nook of every community. The digital world and the digital economy has presented a new set of challenges for communities and families of all dimensions. It's our duty to remind others of all that is possible when service to community is regarded as personal responsibility and as a vehicle to reconnect what can sometimes be a disconnected society. While my firm has had the opportunity to serve organizations of every size, including major pharmaceutical companies, Fortune One Hundreds, and national retailers, my most proud moments in my professional career have come from helping folks who have beat all odds and have overcome incredible adversity and who have been able to successfully deliver inventions and innovations that in turn and by design are helping to serve others at this very moment. Whether it be in a rural hospital, in the form of a device that's helping a new parent, or through other means, these solutions are working to improve the human condition. The most precious commodity we have is time, so I don't want to take much more of yours. But giving our time and giving it away to help others, bring innovation to life, has changed the way I see the world and the way others that join me in my service have also changed the way they see the world. We have learned quite a bit along the way and we feel absolutely confident that the best is yet to come. Thank you, leaders, once again for this honor. Thank you, the city of Columbus, for being nothing short of amazing. If I may do anything to assist any of you in your respective districts, please know that I am at your service. Thank you so much.
Thank you. If you'll come around so we can shake your hand.[981.12][981.12](applause) Our next proclamation will be by Counselor Walker Garrett. And this is for the Timmer Pythons Day. And if you'll come forward. And if you have parents or anybody out there who wants to take pictures, you can come up behind us and take pictures. And if you all would turn and face us, I guarantee you they'll see you on TV.[1039.01][1039.01](laughing) They will still see you on TV.
Say again, if parents, anybody want to take pictures of them, if you'll come and stand behind us, you can take a good picture.
Now that everybody's gathered, it's my pleasure to read this proclamation to the record. Whereas on May 5th and 6th, 2018, the Timmer Pythons Cheerleading Senior Level Two Squad, under the outstanding leadership of head coach Mandy Hood, assistant coach Drew Lyons, and gym owner Heath Perkins, took the stage during the prestigious Summit National Championship Competition held at the ESPN Wide World of Sports in Orlando, Florida. And whereas this invitation, only competition brought up the absolute top fifteen percent of teams from around the United States and across the world, United Cheerleading, based in the heart of Columbus, Georgia, had six teams eligible to compete and the odds of making this competition are low and the odds of winning the competition are less than point zero three percent. And whereas on May 6th, the Timmer Pythons talent, hard work, dedication, and outstanding coaching culminated in a flawless final day routine, earning their team the highest score in their division with an unprecedented zero deductions. The Timmer Pythons beat out the best twenty-seven squads in the world to capture the first ever Summit Championship for United Cheerleading. Their achievement has been noted by fellow competitors, cheerleading blogs, magazines, and websites. And whereas our 2017 through 18, Timmer Pythons Cheerleading Squad consists of members Abby Parker, Leah Hudson, and raise your hand if we call your name and you're here, but I'll ream again. Abby Parker, Leah Hudson, Alexis Glover, Lisa Hinte, Lisa Mooney, Angel King, Ashley Harmon, Avery Bullock, Avery Hudson, Valia Griggs, Connor Stanley, Corinne Walker, Dealey Graham, Da'keah Lawson, Hannah Willis, Julie Brazier, Kara Freeman, Kayla Davis, Kalen Sett, Kiana Ayala. Apologies if I'm messing up anyone's names here. I'm doing the best I can. Kailene Freeman, Madeline Lashley, Michaela Sherman, Maya Saka, Olivia Kelly, Anaya Harmon, Sophia Madrano, Summerlin Dawson, Tywin Eggleston, and Tori Kendrick. And whereas this team shows us if you believe in it, you will achieve in it. And whereas all things are possible through God, and whereas the mayor and council of Columbus, Georgia, recognize the accomplishments of the Timmer Pythons All-Star Cheer Team for United Cheerleading, now therefore Teresa Pike Tomlinson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, June 5th, 2018 as Timmer Pythons Day.[1257.33][1257.33](applause)
I first want to say thank you guys for your recognition and for everything you do for the city of Columbus. As far as these guys go, they've worked their tails off for the past ten months, had to deal with me on several crazy occasions, but they've gone down to Summit several times and given it their all, but this last time was something special. They came together as a team and I'm so glad they got to represent Columbus and United Cheerleading in such a positive way. And I look forward to continuing watching these guys grow throughout until they graduate high school. So thank you again.
Thank you. And I have to say, I have to say a special thank you and congratulations to Anaya. Anaya is my neighbor and my church member.[1313.75][1313.75](laughing) And if you all come around so we can shake your hands. Congratulations, 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 congratulations. Congratulations, 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 congratulations. Good job, good job. Congratulations, 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 good job, It should be enough for all of them. You're welcome. You have your hands full.[1380.01][1380.01](laughing)[1381.01][1381.01](applause)
I gotta let him do his thing.
Mm-hmm.
Am I going to have a fork?
No, so far.
Oh, wait. I belong to one of the mothers.
Your person is not coming?
No, I got that phone call. Yeah, I got that phone call.
The next proclamation, if you're looking at the agenda, for Mr. Carden will be given at a later date. Our next proclamation will be by Counselor Judah Thomas, Columbus, Georgia LGBT Pride Month.
Welcome, Ms. Parr. I'm pleased to read this into the record.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Whereas every June in Columbus, Georgia, the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender community and allies come together for a month-long celebration of love, diversity, acceptance, and unshamed self-pride. And whereas five years ago, Colgay Pride set out on a mission to provide our city with its first Broadway citywide LGBT Pride Festival to bring all our citizens together, gay and straight alike, to celebrate the power of diversity, to create unity in our community, to hear each other's stories, and our impassioned pleas for better legislation and leadership, to honor those who go above and beyond for equity, to entertain, to bring laughter, and to share tears together about our amazing journey on the road to equality. And for five years, the Columbus, Georgia LGBT Pride Festival has grown to more than a thousand people attending each year and continues to change lives and perspectives in our community. Whereas since nineteen, I'm sorry, since 2015, LGBT marriage equity became law of our land, we remind our community the fight is far from over when it comes to equity and nondiscrimination. The theme of this year's Pride is Hate Will Not Win. Advancing the fair treatment of all people has long been a cornerstone of American diplomacy and we have made defending and promoting the human rights of LGBT individuals a priority in our engagement across the nation. And whereas each year we honor individuals who have gone above and beyond the call of duty, we honor them for their service, fortitude, and work that they do as LGBT citizens. This year we honor and recognize Dan Jones for Lifetime Achievement in Education, Jeremy Scott Hobbs for Lifetime Achievement for LGBT and HIV Advocacy, the creation of Colgay Pride, and the Columbus, Georgia LGBT Pride Festival. Stella Draco for Lifetime Achievement in Entertainment and Mentoring, Ventrine Parr for LGBT Pioneer of the Year for her tireless and courageous work for advocacy and equity and as a community activist. And whereas the fight for dignity and equity for LGBT people is reflected in the tireless dedication of advocates and allies who strive to forge a more inclusive society. And whereas this month, we recognize all they have done to bring us to this point and we recommend to bending the arc of our country, state, and great city toward a more equal and diverse nation. Now therefore Teresa Pike Tomlinson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim the month of June as Columbus, Georgia Gay, Lesbian, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month. Congratulations.[1638.01][1638.01](applause)
We just want to say thank you so very much and we look forward to a prosperous future with the city of Columbus, Georgia. And once again, hate will not win. Thank you so much.
Thank you. If you'll come around so we can shake your hand.
Yes, ma'am.
Resolution, express an appreciation to Ms. Brenda Palaski-
a more inclusive society. And whereas this month, we recognize all they have done to bring us to this point, and we recommend to bending the arc of our country, state, and great city toward a more equal and diverse nation. Now therefore, Teresa Pike Tomlinson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim the month of June as Columbus, Georgia Gay, Lesbian, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month. Congratulations.
We just want to say thank you so very much, and we look forward to a prosperous future with the city of Columbus, Georgia. And once again, hate will not win. Thank you so much.
Thank you. If you'll come around so we can shake your hand.
Yes, ma'am.
And now we go to the resolutions. Resolution: Express an appreciation to Ms. Brenda Palaski for her meritorious service on the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission. Express an appreciation to Ms. Charlotte Irvin on the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission. Express an appreciation to Mr. Daniel Culpepper on the Columbus Golf Course Authority. Express an appreciation to Mr. Daniel Jeff Blakenship for his service on the Golf Course Authority. Express an appreciation to Reverend Dr. Ralph Hewland for his service on the Golf Course Authority. And express an appreciation to Mr. Charlie Desai for his service on the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board of Commissions. I move for the adoptions.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposes? Thank you. And we'll see that those are given to the individuals. And that's it for our proclamation resolutions. Next, we'll have... Approval of the minutes for March 27th, April 24th, Executive Session. Oh, that's right. We'll have to come back to that.
Yeah, we'll just bring it back when we have one more, counselor.
Well, now we will go to the City Attorney's Agenda.
All right. Are you ready? Thank you, Mayor Protem. We're going to delay Item 1 on our agenda, the demolition of various structures until June 12th. There were...folks were notified by letter for that date anyway, so we'll just delay that one week. The next item is a zoning item. If we can go ahead and call that, this is just a public hearing. It's 3812 Casita Road, going from general commercial to light manufacturing. Mr. John Anchor, Anchor Pack, I think, yeah, he's present. Are there any questions? And let's see if anybody in the audience wants to be heard. Don't see that. Any questions around the table?
No.
All right.
My light is on.
We'll vote on that, Mr. Anchor, next week. And that's a 9 o'clock meeting, is that right, Ms. Clerk? Okay. 9 o'clock next week. Thank you. All right. Our Item 3 is the Operating Capital Improvement Budget. There are some possible amendments, Ms. City Manager?
It's on First Reading.
All right.
Mayor Protem, if...well, that's okay. I was going to ask that you delay Number 3 and move to Number 4, but we've got another council member here, so...yes.
Got some possible amendments City Manager wants to discuss on the budget.
Yes.
Okay. You want to go on and do Number 4 while he gets settled?
No.
Are you gonna?
Well...
You need some time. While he gets settled in. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and we do have the budget First Reading on this evening. And I've got a few requests related to the First Reading that I would like to ask of the members of council. We've got our Finance Director, Angelica Alexander, here, and she will answer any questions on First Read, but first I wanted to make a couple of requests. And so, the operating budget as presented this evening is $275,340,292, with estimated general fund reserve days at 61.91 days. So, the budget, $275,340,292, reserve days, 61.91 days. I have three requests dealing with the mayor's office budget related to the transition of office from the current mayor to the mayor-elect in January 2019. Also, I have one request related to the Information Technology Office. The four requests will not change or affect the operating budget of $275,340,292 as presented this evening, and will not change or affect the estimated general fund reserve days at 61.91 days. So, let me explain. We typically budget $225,000 in general fund contingency. We typically budget $225,000 in general fund contingency. In the budget before you tonight, the FY19 budget, we budgeted $300,412 due to last-minute budget adjustments related to dissolving the adult probation office and other minor budget corrections. These adjustments placed $75,412 more in contingency than we typically budget. During the FY19 budget review deliberations, staff recommended and council approved using $5,000 from contingency to cover the increase related to the Malden and Jenkins audit contract, leaving $70,412 above what we typically budget in contingency. In preparation of the transition of the office of the mayor from the current mayor to the mayor-elect, I spoke to the mayor-elect, and he would like to revert back to the staffing organizational structure used by mayors prior to the current mayor. Therefore, I am proposing the mayor-elect's preferred staffing organization structure be made part of the FY19 budget adoption. Here's what I am proposing to council as part of the First Read in order to transition from the current mayor to the mayor-elect in January 2019. Request Number 1: amend the general fund budget to delete the following positions from the mayor's office effective January 5, 2019, which is when the current mayor goes out of office. So, we would delete these positions. Executive Assistant to the mayor, which is a grade G00, which means it's a non-merited position and always has been a non-merited position. We would delete that position. We would delete the Public Information Officer slash Calendar Coordinator, a G16. We would delete the Coordinator of Policy and Research, which is a grade 16. You may remember, the current mayor went from the old staffing structure to put all three employees in that office on the same level at the same pay grade. So, we would delete those three positions effective January 5, 2019. And we would amend this budget, the First Read, amend the general fund budget to add the following positions to the mayor's office effective January 6, 2019, the very next day. Executive Assistant to the mayor would go back in as a G00, which is a non-merited position. It's not in the merit system. And you may ask, why are you deleting and you adding the same position back? When it went to a 16 under the current structure, it was lowered from the pay that it was when it was under the old...under the previous former mayors. The position during those times were somewhere around 50 or slightly more than 50, if you recall. We would add Executive Assistant at G14, which is what it was before the current mayor, and we would add Administrative Secretary at G10, which is what that position was before the current mayor. And so, when you go back to mayors Wetherington, Portishev, Peters, these were the exact positions that were under those mayors, and it only changed with the current mayor. So, the mayor-elect wants to go back to that staffing, that structure. The cost associated with this staffing reorganization is $3,858. $3,858. We will reduce contingency by this amount to remain budget-neutral. Request Number 2, that's Request Number 1. Request Number 2: when the current mayor took office, she provided and brought in her own furniture, her desk, her tables, her chairs, et cetera. It belongs to her. Therefore, we will need to provide furniture for the mayor-elect's office, and we would like to replace chairs and/or furniture in the conference room of the mayor's office. And so, I'm requesting in Request Number 2 that council approve up to, and that's up to $15,000, from contingency to purchase office furniture in the mayor's office associated with the transition from the current mayor to the new mayor. That will come out of contingency. Request Number 3: mayors prior to this mayor drove city vehicles. Wetherington had a city vehicle, Portishev had a city vehicle, Peters had a city vehicle, and so on. The current mayor opted to receive a car allowance. The mayor-elect has opted to drive a city car in lieu of receiving a car allowance like previous mayors. And so, I'm requesting to use approximately $30,000 from contingency to purchase a car for the mayor-elect. The vehicle will be available when he takes office in January 2019. So, in summary, all of these items for the transition in the mayor's office totaled $48,858. There is no impact to the budget as presented this evening, as we will simply reduce or use contingency to cover these items. As stated earlier, we typically budget $225,000 in general fund contingency. In FY19, we budgeted, as I said earlier, $300,412 due to last-minute budget adjustments related to dissolving the adult probation office and other budget corrections. These adjustments placed $75,412 more in contingency than we typically budget. So, taking $48,858 from contingency will not pose a problem related to what we are accustomed to budgeting for contingency. And those are the requests for the transition in the mayor's office, and it will all come out of the increased contingency for those reasons that I've outlined. And so, I will pause there to answer any questions because there is one additional request related to the Information Technology Department.
Counselor Judith Thomas?
This may be somewhat of a technicality, Mr. City Manager, but the mayor, as I understand it, actually takes office on January the 7th.
Okay.
And the dates that you have read were earlier than that, and I don't know if we need to make some delineation on that or not, but technically, it's June...I'm sorry, January 7th.
Well, let... I would just change those dates for everything you just discussed to January 7th. We have already reminded the mayor-elect that that is the official date.
Okay.
It's the 7th.
Then that would be correct.
And that would be for both stopping and starting.
Right.
Yeah.
So, that is my request in terms of the First Read on the budget, that you would make those adjustments.
With the pleasure of counsel.
Well, and you're just voting on a motion...
Right.
...to amend the budget positions and the budget ordinance to the effect of these three adjustments, but there's no net effect on the dollar amount of the operating budget.
That's correct.
Right.
The operating budget will remain...
Just a motion then.
Second.
Yes, from Poplin, moving motion to second, that the adjustments of the First Read be done. Are we set up to...
No.
Okay. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
And opposes? Thank you.
Okay, Madam, Mayor Protem, the final request related to the First Read. After the mayor's office items that you have just voted on, we have $21,554 more than what we typically budget in contingency. IT Director Forrest Toley has a grade 19 application developer position that is currently unfunded in his budget. It was unfunded in fiscal year 15 due to budget cuts. Director Toley made a request to the Budget Review Committee to fund this position. It was not budget-neutral and was not included in the mayor's proposed FY19 budget. Council vote was inconclusive at the Budget Review Session. There were five votes supporting it. Tonight, I am requesting reconsideration and asking you to approve this unfunded position. The need is critical, and I wanted to take an opportunity to tell you why the need is critical. An application developer is charged with not only writing new applications for a software package. They are responsible for the overall data integrity of the application as well as security features and general maintenance and upkeep of the software package. We are moving to integrated new Malden systems that require more skills and new specific sets of skills to maintain functionality. The Columbus Consolidated Government has invested more than $20 million in improvements to our software systems inventory over a five-year period, and the need for real-time accurate reports and system integrations is critical. We have brought in to the CCG new finance, HR, payroll programs, the CAD program, Premier One, the Integrated JAIL, COARDS, Public Safety Enterprise System, IES World Tax System, Intergov for Business License, inspections and codes, special enforcement, planning and engineering, and implementing many of our other systems has made the need for integration critical. If we're going to be an efficient and effective government, we must continue to invest in technology, and we must have trained and experienced personnel to make it all work. System reliability and stability, along with customization, including reporting, are required for long-term application success, and an IT application developer is the appropriate IT position to do the IT function necessary. The IT application developer position has been vetted by UGA, as University of Georgia, and graded a 19. My request is that you reconsider funding this critical unfunded position based on the more than $20 million investments made over the last five years. This will allow us to get the results we are looking for based on the investments we've made. I am requesting that you fund this position as of 12/29/18, as you did with other approved positions, which will require $29,245. positions, which will require $29,245. $22,157 plus benefits of $7,088 brings you to the $29,245. After the mayor's office items, I share with you that we have $21,554 more than what we typically budget still remaining in contingency. We can use the additional contingency monies to help offset the $29,245, but this will still leave a difference of $7,691. We can still use contingency funds to cover the $7,691 needed to fully fund the IT application developer position and operate with a $217,209 balance in contingency instead of the $225,000 that we typically start the budget year off with. So, if you did the $7,691, we would have $217,209 in contingency versus the typical $225,000 that we would have in contingency when we start our fiscal year. After taking all of the above items into account, we have used $78,103 in contingency funds, leaving approximately $217,209 in contingency for fiscal year 2019, again, instead of the typical $225,000. With these adjustments, there is no impact to the operating budget as presented tonight. It still remains at $275,000, $275,340,292, and the estimated general fund reserve days still remain at six to 1.91 days. And so, I'm asking you to approve the IT application developer position for the second half of the fiscal year, and it would require $7,691 to make this happen, and we still are not changing the budget total or the fund balance, reserve day total. And so, I'm asking for your reconsideration and your approval this evening.
Are there any questions of the city manager, any comments? I guess it does for lack of a second.
It would. It would for lack of a second. Conceivably, it could be discussed next week, but we're on first reading now, so for the time being, it will remain as is.
Okay. And so, any questions of a finance director related to the first reading of the budget?
Anybody in the audience want to be heard?
Counselor Whitson.
Okay.
City Manager. I had made a request and spoke with you in reference to the Marshals' Office and the computers that they needed to be, the program to be compared with the rest of public safety. What happened to that item?
Um.
Because I thought we were going to bring that back. It was something where his computers are not comparable with the other ones when the information is centered. And I had asked you, and you were going to look into it.
You did.
And then bring something back for today.
Um, yeah, I was going to look into it, but I didn't know that it was a budget matter at this time, and I'd really like some clarification on what they are making reference to.
Well, we have someone here from the Marshals' Office. They can.
So, I'd love for them to come forward and tell me what they're talking about.
Good evening.
Hey.
Martha Confinment and Chief Deputy Moore cannot make it. I'm Captain Curtis Lockett. What we're asking for is the 911 Center is converting to an upgraded CAT system, which is that dispatches all the calls, keeps track of all the officers, have a mapping system to track where the deputies and officers are throughout the city as they do business day-to-day. When they upgrade, the computers we have now are not compatible. We will not be able to see each other on the CAT system. 911 will not be able to see us. We can't communicate with the 911 system. Our dispatcher, the system we have, will be antiquated, and it will be unsafe for our deputies. What we want is the same thing that the Police Department is getting, the upgraded, they're just MDTs for the cars, mobile data terminals. And IT has already priced them. The Police Department, they're already getting them now to get ready for the upgrade, and we were just notified a few months ago that we needed to make this upgrade, and we put it into the budget, but it was not added to the mayor's budget.
And how many do you need?
We need 12 of them, for a total of about $34,000 and some change.
12?
I would think that would be automatic.
I would think so, too.
And that's the installation and migration of the information into the new system from the old.
Would you just let the IT Director come in on that? Maybe there's a breakdown in communication.
As far as the computers, MDTs, but we actually use regular laptops now, and IT's budgeted, and we already have some on order for the Marshals' Department, including the car that, I guess, burned. And in July would be the order. I think the system goes live in October. What we're not budgeted for is to provide the installation and stuff like that for the cars, but 12 computers, I think we're short on the order, not that we're short of the money, but in July, we will be ordering the rest of those for that system. So, with that request, it's kind of would be taken care of if the budget's approved as presented, then IT has enough money to finish off the refresh for the cars. Again, we don't do installation in the cars. I believe that's a different company, but the computers themselves will be replaced.
So, let me get clarification. So, there are computers who will be replaced because you have enough to replace them? What you don't have is the funding to install them into the vehicles?
Well, we typically don't install them, so it's not that I have funding or don't have funding. IT doesn't install computers into the police cars. I believe there's another contract for that. All we do is provide the equipment, so I typically don't install computers in police cars. That's done by offshoot of Motorola.
Proprietary.
In proprietary, so they do the installations.
Well, and.
Well, that, I mean, I have more questions now. Maybe somebody can clarify for me, because if we have the computers available for them to be able to communicate with 911, but the problem is installing it, that defeats the whole purpose.
Well, let me just say this, Counselor. The problem is communication.
Okay.
You know, no one has come to me, other than you mentioning that to me. And, you know, we're one phone call away or one visit, and we would then know what the problem is and the fact that they've been ordered, and you ordered them specifically for the Marshals' Office.
We have several on order. The rest of them will be ordered in July with the next budget.
And so, yeah, we just, they just need to communicate with my office.
I understand that, and with all respect, I understand that maybe the communication was broken down or something, but when I made the request, I would assume that everyone would start talking and see what the need was between the IT, finance, and so forth, so that we could see what was needed then, because nothing was ever communicated back to me to say that, you know, the computers are here, the problem is the installation, and then what is that cost of that installation? You know, so that means we would have to come back during second reading or before then to see what that cost is of that installation, because I'm thinking, okay, we're going to have these computers ready to go, but they're not going to be used because money was in budget to install them?
Well.
Or am I miscommunicating, or am I misunderstanding?
Let me just say, I don't even, I don't know that. I don't know that the money is not in fleet maintenance.
Okay.
To get them installed. When the sheriff wants something, they call me, they visit with me, they schedule a meeting, and we talk it through, and then I'll come to you. When the Police Department wants, you know, and we offer, when the marshal wanted a car, he called me at home on a Sunday. On Tuesday, by Monday, we did an emergency purchase of a vehicle, and Tuesday, I told you about it. That's three days communication. One phone call, did it. That's all I asked for. And so, computers are ordered, and I can't tell you about installation, because I haven't been asked about installation, but we'll find out, and I am sure that if we get the computers in, we can get them installed. It does not take an act of counsel to make that happen.
So, the cost of installation for 12 computers would be $10,584?
We can handle that. We'll figure it out.
So, do we just leave it with you then?
Absolutely.
And it happens.
Okay. Any more questions on that?
No.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions around the table? We'll see if anybody in the audience wants to be heard on the operating budget. If not, we will bring it back for a vote next week. Okay, Ms. Alexander, the next item is the non-operating budgets, various funds such as Urban Development Action Grant, Home Program, those are all listed in the ordinance. Any questions of the Finance Director around the table? Don't see any. We'll vote on that next week. The solid waste collection disposal amendments, we're talking about an $18 garbage fee proposal on the table, and a low-income offset under the federal Health and Human Services Guidelines. This is item five. Are there any questions around the table? Don't see any. We'll vote on that next week. Item six is an ordinance amending section 8-14 of the Columbus Code to revise fees for certificate of occupancy permits. This is, will be at $40. Any questions?
I see none.
All right. Bring that back for a vote next week. Now, I will call the next four together. These are pension plan amendments for general government, public safety, the Major Disability Income Plan, and the Death Benefit Escrow Plan, all effective July 1. The funding amounts listed. Is it any questions from council on that, those items?
I see no lights.
Okay. We'll bring those back next week. The item 11 is an ordinance revising Columbus Code Sections 16B, 15, 5, and 6 for annual leave, sick leave, to provide that such leave may be taken in 15-minute increments. This is a housekeeping measure. I don't know if Ms. Hollowell is here, but that is requested. Any questions?
I see no lights.
Okay. Item 12 is an ordinance amending chapter 13. This is to revise definitions on enforcement and regulation of stockpile materials. This is, we had discussion last week, but are there any questions around the table?
I see no lights.
Don't see any. We will bring that back for a vote. The item 13 is an ordinance authorizing a referendum that will occur at the same time as the general election on November 6. This would authorize the sale of alcoholic beverages for consumption on Sundays at restaurants between the hours of 11:00 a.m. and 12:30 p.m., one and a half hours earlier than permitted now. It's authorized by state law and requested by Counselor Garrett and others, but any questions about that? It has to be a special referendum.
Counselor Thomas.
City Attorney, as I understand it, the only difference this referendum would make in what we currently have on the books is moving the start time from 12:30 to 11:00 a.m. Is that, that's the only change?
That's right. There'll be one and a half hours extra time that.
But you still have to meet all of the other requirements for.
Still have to be a bona fide restaurant. Under state law and our code.
And the state legislature calls for a referendum for this hour and a half change?
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll bring that back for a vote, and then if the referendum passes in November, it will automatically go into effect the Sunday after the referendum. Okay. The item 14 is a membership provision change for Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Athletic Director of Muskogee County School District, the ex officio. Any questions on that? And then item 15, similar amendment for the Aquatic Center Advisory Committee. We will bring those back for a vote next week, Mayor Protem. All right, item 16 is a resolution reaffirming the intent to use 70% of OLOS proceeds, that's a second penny sales tax, to enhance public safety, and 30% for roads and infrastructure. Counselor Thomas, you want to comment?
Yeah, I moved the, excuse me, I moved the adoption of this resolution, and then I'd like to speak to it if I get a second. The last several months, there's been a lot of discussion in the community about the fact that the other local option sales tax is not in a separate account, and there have been, there were a lot of people who were saying that this money has been misspent, and I don't believe that is so. But at any rate, having talked with several of the counselors about this and talked with our mayor-elect, what we are proposing in this resolution, and I would like to read it so that those who are listening know exactly what we're talking about, what we are proposing is that we reaffirm our position on the OLOS. The resolution says, whereas the voters of Muskogee County voted on July 15, 2008 to impose a new local option sales tax, OLOS, pursuant to OCGA Section 48-8-96, whereas the Columbus Council by adoption of Resolution 207-08 on May 6, 2008, declared its intention to use 70% of the OLOS proceeds to enhance public safety and 30% for roads and infrastructure. Whereas it remains the intention of the Columbus Council to continue the commitment to spend the proceeds of the 2008 OLOS in the same manner as declared in Resolution 207-08, to wit, to use 70% of existing and new OLOS proceeds to enhance public safety and 30% for roads and infrastructure. for roads and infrastructure. Now, therefore, the Council of Columbus, Georgia hereby resolves, to the extent permitted by applicable Georgia law, we hereby express our intent to use 70% of OLOS proceeds to enhance public safety, and 30% for roads and infrastructure. The reason that I'm bringing this to you, it's been 10 years since we originally adopted the resolution, and this will just say, we intend to continue to spend this in the same way. It's just a reaffirmation of that. In talking with some of the counselors, they said perhaps we should have been doing that every year, but we haven't, and it's been 10 years now, and I just feel like it's important for us to say to the community, this is what we intend to do. This is what we've done, and this is what we intend to do. So, I solicit your support of this resolution. Thank you, madam.
So, you have, you made a motion, right?
Yes.
We have a motion in second.
Got a motion.
Okay. It's been motion in second. Any questions? All those in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed? Thank you.
Okay.
And we also need to go back and approve, vote on the six resolutions we had earlier in the minutes before we finish your agenda.
That's fine. Can we get a motion for the resolutions that were commending various board members for their service?
It's been motion in second. Any questions? All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
And opposes? Thank you.
And then.
Your approval of the minutes?
Right.
It's been motion in second that the minutes be received for March 27 and April 24th, Xavier Sessions. March 20th, May 22nd, council meeting, and May 29th, council work session. Are there any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposes? Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Protem, please have one more resolution. This would be affirming under the authority of OCGA 46-5-134, 134.2. These would be various 911 charges. I believe it's $1.50 effective January 1 for all services, land, e-wireless, 911, and prepaid wireless. Is that correct, Ms. Alexander?
Yes.
All right. We need a motion.
So, move.
Second.
It's been motion in second that we approve the resolution as it relates to 911 and the cost. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, a second.
All right. Let us pass. And Mayor Protem, time permitting, we would just need a very short executive session on a litigation matter.
Okay.
Demolition? No.
No, demolition's gonna be put off until.
We'll bring the demolition back June 12th. The notices went out apparently for June the 12th, and that's fine. That will give people one more week to respond. That's all we have listed.
Thank you. There's no one on the public agenda. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, ma'am. I've got mostly grants on my agenda tonight. The first one is a fiscal year 2019 grant application for capital and planning assistance. It's $2.9 million with the Federal Transit Administration, and we're asking for your approval. It's the annual grant.
It's been motion in second that we approve FY 2019 grant application for capital and planning assistance. This is Department of Transportation and Metro for 2.9 million.
That's correct.
Any questions? All those in favor? It's keyed up. Okay.
Okay. I've got another grant. It's a FY 2019 grant application for planning assistance, and it's for Metro, applying to the Georgia Department of Transportation. It's $138,860. It's an annual grant.
It's been motion in second for the grant application for Metro, planning assistance. It's keyed up.
Got a contract between CCG and Board of Regents of the University System of Georgia. We come to you with this every year. It's related to one of the employees with cooperative extension.
Move.
It has been motion in second that we approve the grant request for cooperative extension services. It's keyed up.
Got a Veterans Court Grant. It's $100,884. It's, the grant is $90,796. The match is $10,088, and we're asking your approval.
Move.
The Veterans Court Grant request has been motion in second. It's keyed up. And it passes.
I've got the Mental Health Court Grant. It's $236,826. The match is $23,683, and we're asking your approval. It's an annual grant.
Move.
You don't have a court grant. Request has been approved. I mean, we have a motion in a second. It's keyed up. And it passes.
Got one item on purchase agenda. It's an emergency notification system. In the past, we've dealt with Code Red. We did an RFP, and Civic Plus, Inc., won the, they're the successful vendor, and they are a national organization as well, and we're asking your approval.
Move.
The emergency notification system annual contract has, that was previously Code Red, was Civic Plus. No questions? It's keyed up.
Got a couple of updates. The first one is the Claflin School Project. I'm gonna ask Community Reinvestment Director Laura Johnson to come around first.
Good evening.
Tonight, we have Thompson Gooden from Oracle Consulting Services here to do an update on the Claflin Project. Before I bring him forward, I just briefly wanted to give you a history of how far we have come since we initially came to council to ask for the approval to enter into a lease agreement with the Friends of Historic Claflin for this project. So, I wanted to just point out that the first time that we actually came to council and asked approval for the City Manager to enter into a lease agreement with the Friends of Historic Claflin was on February 24, 2015. So, as you can see, it's been a long time since we first started this project. So, from then, back in May of 2017, was when we received council's approval for amending the original lease agreement and allowing for the partnership with Oracle Consulting to do a development of affordable housing at the Claflin School. After that, in July of 2017, was when we were able to get the deed restriction lifted off of the building by the U.S. General Services Administration. And then, in November of 2017, is when Oracle Consulting was actually awarded the low-income housing tax credits to proceed with the project. And then, as of December of 2017, was the last time, I believe, that we've been to council, and that was when City Council approved subleasing the Claflin School lease to the joint venture Claflin School Preservation LP. So, I'm about to bring forward Thompson Gooden with Oracle Consulting Services, and he will be providing updates on the status of the project and discussing some revisions that they're requesting to the lease agreement.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and thank you, council members, for the opportunity to come here for you tonight. I do want to give you an update on how far we've come since I last came before you in November, December, and I'm thrilled to be able to say that we are extremely close to being able to close on the financing for this project and actually begin work to address the environmental issues on this building and restore it back to its original glory. You have here a semi-recent photo of the building, kind of to highlight its current condition, and then a shot of the, from our plans of what the front of the building will look like when it's restored. And you'll see a theme throughout that, for historical purposes, the new building is gonna look a lot like the old building. We really wanted to save all of the historic elements of the building, return some that have been removed over the years, and preserve this building as it was originally intended. Just kind of big picture, this is what the site looks like now. For those of you that aren't familiar, this is at the intersection of Fifth Avenue and Lynnwood Boulevard near Lynnwood Cemetery. And this is the site plan that we're currently proposing. You can see the two existing buildings in the middle, and then we are proposing three small new buildings to the north and east in the existing schoolyard. These buildings have been very carefully designed and intentionally placed to minimize the impact on the historic schoolyard and also the views in consultation with the State Historic Preservation Office and the National Park Service at the federal level. These are some renderings of what the building will look like. Again, it looks very similar to its current state, but I can assure you that the difference will be striking. And to illustrate that, I want to show you some before and after photos of a recent similar project we just completed in Macon, Georgia. The AL Miller School is larger than the Claflin School, but very similar in a lot of ways. Many years of vacancy, neglect. It was also listed by the Georgia Trust on their Places in Peril list of endangered historic buildings, and this building was completed, I have 2016 rehabilitation completed in 2017, and actually just recently won an award from the Historic Macon Foundation for the restoration. You can see here a picture of the building before we got to it, and again, in similar disrepair to the current Claflin building. This is a shot, again, of the front before the restoration, and then here it is after the restoration. And I hope that you were as struck as I was by the contrast between the two. This building has really been restored.
Can you go back and do it again?
Now, you can see why it won the award. You know, a lot of the old windows get filled in over the years. It's amazing what you, what it looks like when you open them back up, both from the outside and then also with the additional light on the inside of the building. And this is a shot from the rear where actually most of the parking is, but an equally striking difference between the two. And we hope to bring the same incredible before and after to the Claflin Project here in Columbus. We're really excited about that as well. So, I wanted to highlight a few of the many things that we've been doing since we came before you in November, December. We came to you at the end of last year, kind of trying to stay ahead of the tax reform that at the time was still a big, unknown, moving target. We needed to get site control of the site in the name of the actual entity that will own and renovate this building, and you were able to help us successfully do that. But because there were so many moving pieces with tax reform, we got one important piece, but ultimately, we'll need to come to you to ask for a few other changes that I'll get to in a minute. Since that time, we have met with numerous city departments. Laura has been extremely helpful, everyone in the City Attorney's Office, City Manager's Office. We solicited input from pretty much any city department that would have us, police, fire, Public Works. We attempted to meet with everybody and incorporate the input that we were able to receive. One example of this was we changed the parking and entrance locations to accommodate requests from the Fire Marshal for safety and the Traffic Department as well. We have worked with local architect 2WR and Partners. They helped develop a lot of the plans for this building in partnership with our related party architect. As I mentioned earlier, we've been having very detailed discussions with the State Historic Preservation Office and the National Park Service at the federal level as well. We've secured approval from the Uptown Facade Review Board because we are in their jurisdiction. We've started the green building certification process. This project will be certified under the Enterprise Green Program, which assures energy efficiency, minimizes water use, lowers utility bills for tenants, encourages public transportation, walkability. If you're familiar with the LEED program, it's very similar. Importantly, we won't be able to finish that process until the building is built and they come and finally certify the building, but we've done all of the pre-construction work. We currently have our plans about 99% complete. We're making a few small cleanup items and incorporating feedback that we receive from the various city departments as we are in permitting right now. We hope to get, secure our building permits in the next couple of weeks, and wanted to highlight for you that we anticipate paying between $30,000 and $45,000 in building permit, plan review, utility tap fees that will be revenue to the city as well. On the financial side, we have an investor who has committed approximately $9 million to fund this project. We also have a lender committed that will fund the construction loan while we are underway. We are currently bidding the various trades that will be part of this project, and definitely want to point out that over half of the bidders at this point are local bidders. Ultimately, whoever we secure for each individual trade has to be qualified and cost competitive, but to the extent we can check both of those boxes, we want to include as much local participation as we can. This is obviously a very important community project, and we want to include as many people from the local area and, very importantly, the local economy in the construction. Right now, we are going through the final legal and underwriting processes, and with your help, we hope to be able to close this project and begin work on or shortly after July 1st of this year. So, as I said earlier, we are extremely close to the finish line on this one. Laura highlighted how long the process this has been. I commend you and thank you for your support and belief in this project, especially since this is the 150th anniversary of the Claflin School coming up, I believe, September 25th. So, it's an important year for this building in a variety of ways. Wanted to give you this update on what we've been up to, and then I also wanted to come to you and ask for some changes to the ground lease that I believe we'll bring up for a vote at the meeting next week. The current ground lease, as amended, is for 45 years. Our investor's tax council has pointed out that in order to satisfy all of the myriad rules for the tax credits, and I am not a tax attorney, so this goes way over my head, we need to have a minimum term of 65 years. This is related to the expected useful life of the building, the depreciation of the building. It really is a technical thing. I don't know that anyone anticipates the lease actually going for 65 years. This is really just so that we can satisfy all the tax rules, and then as the building gets up in age, it will ultimately be, at some point, probably transferred back to the city or redeveloped or somehow handled and renovated again. We also need to add some provisions for financing, and I'm hitting the high points for you guys. We're working closely with the City Attorney's Office to hammer out all the fine details, but the current ground lease did not have any provisions for financing in terms of placing a mortgage on the property, which we need to do at least during the construction period. And then, if anything, if we fail to uphold our obligations under the lease, need to give the investor the ability, among other things, to correct that default and step in and continue on with the project without just being instantly replaced. Those provisions will be spelled out very well. The city will have recourse for any default on our side. We don't want you to feel that we're taking any of your recourse or anything away. We also need to specify what happens at the end of the term of the lease. The original lease just did not contemplate that one way or another. I believe we have proposed that it reverts back to the city, but certainly our. I believe we have proposed that it reverts back to the city, but certainly are open to your suggestions on that. And then because we had the original lease and then an amendment and then the sublease at the end of last year, we felt it prudent just to clean everything up with an amended and restated ground lease that we can all point back to a single document. It's much cleaner. So, I'll be happy to address any questions you have, but as long as we can continue to make good progress, we hope to bring this up for a vote next week.
Counselor Huff.
One question. Great presentation.
Thank you.
You mentioned that 50% of it would be local, local bidders?
I cannot guarantee that 50% of the ultimate subcontractors...
I'm saying that's what you mentioned just a minute ago.
That, I want to highlight that that's the bidders. Of the people that we have solicited to bid on this project, over 50% are local. Yes, sir.
Okay.
We don't have those bids back in yet, so I can't speak to what the ultimate pool of subcontractors that do the work will look like. But as long as they are qualified and competitive and all other things being equal, we would much rather use local subcontractors.
Okay, and if we're in the 40%, 50% range, what does that equate to as far as local people working?
I believe the construction contract is six, six and a half million dollars, so three, three and a half million dollars.
Okay. Okay. Just looking at local people getting a chance to make money.
Yeah. And that's a great point, and that's maybe the direct costs. That also doesn't take into consideration the permit, plan review, tap fees that we pay to the city, hotels, motels, fuel, materials that are purchased locally. I mentioned the local architect partner. So in addition to that roughly $3 million that we discussed, and again, I'm not guaranteeing that.
Yeah, but that gives some of our local citizens an opportunity to work and make money.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Thomas.
Mr. City Manager, I was just sitting here thinking that several years ago when this all started and we got the notice from the school district that we now had inherited Claflin School, and we were ready to get rid of it, give it to, you know, back to the federal government, and the Friends of Claflin came to us and said, "Give us a chance. Give us an opportunity." And from what we see here tonight, I am really glad we did. It looks like this is going to be a really stellar building in our community, and we're going to be able to maintain the history of this site. And I don't know about you, Mr. City Manager, but I'm glad they came and that we didn't give this back to the federal government and that these folks are doing what you're doing. It looks great. I can't wait for the, for the end product to be there. You said you're going to start probably in July. What are we looking at, 18 months?
Somewhere around there. We do still have a few pieces that need to fall into place, notably the ground lease is one of them before we close, but right now, our best guess is early July. Yes, ma'am. And then 18 months at the most, hopefully closer to 14 or 16.
Well, it looks like it's going to be a great addition to the community, and I want to make sure that we acknowledge the Friends of Claflin and their foresight in coming and helping us see that this can be quite an attribute for our community.
Yes, ma'am. That's an excellent point. I would like to point out that we have two of the Friends of Claflin board members here tonight, and as has been discussed before, but it's worth pointing out again, the Friends of Claflin will be working within the building to highlight the history of the building. There's some classes planned. We've created space for that, both a more flexible meeting space, but also a computer lab for any sort of computer enrichment classes as well. And we, as the developer, are also doing some reading classes for parents and children that both live in the development but also are from the surrounding community. And we have established a partnership with Columbus Regional, which I guess is now Piedmont Columbus, to have their mobile medical unit on-site once a month as well. So it will be a housing development, obviously, but really a community asset that goes far beyond housing as well.
Great. Thank you so much.
And Reverend Destalacy earlier also...
Yes, I did see him.
Mayor Pertin, I just wanted to make a couple of comments also. We have looked at this with our real estate lawyer, Mr. Bill, and these changes are not prohibited by the Georgia Constitution. Of course, the 65-year term is longer than the things you see in the Georgia Constitution, like intergovernmental contracts are 50 years, and this is a bit longer than that, but it is not prohibited. So, we are certainly optimistic that the project will be a positive development.
So you're going to bring this back to us and vote on?
Well, I think the city manager wants to bring it back. Is that the plan?
Yes.
Okay. Other animal questions?
All right. Thank you all very much, and I'll see you next week.
Thank you.
Next, I've got a very brief update on taxpayer bill of rights. We've got our finance director, Angelica Alexander.
Hello again. All right, so this year was, we were presented with a rather precarious situation here. Typically, we experience a nominal, at least, growth in our, in our tax digest, and we experienced this year to year. When we have growth in our tax digest, you know, we have to conduct those three public hearings as required by Georgia law when there is an increase in the tax digest. And what we typically do is we publish an advertisement in the paper to say, "Here is our notice of property tax increase. We tentatively plan to adopt a millage of X amount. There was a rollback rate that's been calculated. That rate is this amount. If our proposed millage rate is more than the calculated rollback rate, then we have to put that advertisement in the paper and give the public three hearings to come and address the millage rate." So that's what we're just going to talk about today. The first meeting actually would have taken place this morning at 9:00 a.m. if we did not put an advertisement in the paper publishing a notice of property tax, notice of tax increase because our digest, estimated digest for 2018 is slightly lower than our certified digest that we received from the Department of Revenue in September. So, just briefly here, just talking about the legal requirements for the taxpayer bill of rights. Each year, you know, the Board of Tax Assessors have, is required to review the assessed value of all properties, and when there is a trend or an increase in the fair market value of a specific property, it could be due to modifications, it could be due to, you know, additions to that property, the Board of Tax Assessors is required to reassess the property. When there are reassessments that have occurred within our county, we have to, or the taxes commissioner and the tax assessor's office have to computate a rollback rate. And so a rollback millage rate must be computed that will produce the same total revenue on this year's current digest that last year's millage rate, so that it would produce the same amount of revenue in total, so that the revenue doesn't increase. If we estimate that we'll get more revenue from our new or current year's digest than we received last year, of course, then we have to have the taxpayer's bill of rights. And so, if the rollback rate is lower than the proposed millage rate, then three public hearings are required. If the rollback rate is higher than the proposed millage rate, then no public hearings are required and we can adopt the tentatively proposed millage rate. The millage ordinance will be on first reading next week. So, the rollback rates that have been calculated by the tax commissioner's office and the tax assessor's office are higher than our proposed millage rates that's in the proposed budget. And so, we are not legally required to have the notice of property tax hearings or the taxpayer bill of rights hearings because of this. So this next slide just shows very briefly the history of our tax digest. This is actually the same information that was advertised in the paper today. If you saw the advertisement in the paper, this is that same information. And as you can see, starting with 2013, we've experienced some growth in our tax digest, which would have required us to, like I said, advertise the notice of property tax increase in the paper because of that, us receiving or acknowledging the increase in the digest and not reducing down the millage rate. So, for 2017, you can see, these numbers are in billions. It was a little bit more than $5 billion, 5.07 billion, that our certified digest was, and this was when it was taken to the Department of Revenue as of September of 2017. So we have experienced, due to the number of appeals, a decrease in the digest, but due to the number of additions, and, you know, those additions could be modifications to properties, it could be new property sales. Taking all these things into account, we are still above in 2018 where we were in 2016, but slightly less than 2017. So because we are less, we're estimating a digest for 2018 that is less than the digest that was certified in 2017, we are not required to have the notice of, the taxpayer bill of right hearings or advertise a notice of property tax increase.
So, I wanted the finance director to come and explain because I figure some around this table may be curious, or some members out there watching by television or attending the city council meeting may be curious or wondering, "Why didn't you have the taxpayer bill of rights? Three required hearings?" Because in my tenure, I think we've had them every year for many, many years. And so I wanted her to explain that we're not having them and why we're not having them. And so she did all of that, and we are saying all of this, and we probably could have said it in more simple terms. If the digest is greater than it was a year before, you must advertise in the newspaper and have three hearings because there was growth in the digest. But if your digest is less or lower than it was a year before, then there is no increase in the digest, and you're not required to have, obviously, the hearings because there was no growth in the digest according to the number. And so therefore, we didn't have a hearing this morning, we didn't have a hearing this afternoon, and typically we would have another hearing next week.
Yes, that's correct.
And that would be the three hearings, and so that's why we're not having them. And we wanted you to know why we're not having them.
Counselor Thomas.
Ms. Alexander, I, I thought that in the mayor's recommended budget, it was stated that the digest is going to be a little over 2% higher than it was last year. Is this, is this not the same thing?
It didn't say higher. It said we project 2% growth, and...
Well, from a budget perspective, we're okay, because I don't know, you know, last year with everything that was going on with the software system and all the presentations that were given by the tax assessor's office, from a budget perspective, we never recognized the increase from a budget perspective. So when we were planning and developing the budget for FY '19, it was developed with this, with the slightly lower digest. We knew in March preliminarily, based on the numbers that we received from the tax assessor's office, that it was slightly less than what was certified. So the budget that we presented, that was presented to council, recognizes the, this decline in the digest.
I think where she may be, where the question may be, we projected 2% growth in the digest, in the FY '19 budget.
Right, but that was based on the FY '18 budget, which had not recognized the growth that we experienced in the digest.
I understand.
Right.
Yeah, so when it was all, the dust settled last year.
Right.
And we got the numbers in, the final growth was what?
According to the, when we do it from certified digest to certified digest, the growth from 2016 to 2017 was at 12%.
Right. And then we, and you remember that huge number in the school district, and they had to go back and re-advertise, I think, we had advertised at...
Seven.
Seven.
Mm-hmm.
And so you have a 3% variance either way. Is that right?
Right. That's correct.
And so, 7% obviously is greater than the 2%.
Right.
And so it was higher last year than it is this year, as we projected 2%.
So I think it could be better said, not necessarily that we, we increased the digest that we used for budget purposes based on the budget that we had last year, which did not recognize all of this increase that we actually received. So it's, it's an adjustment to the budget that, where we're really recognizing the growth.
It's confusing for many when you say there was an increase in the digest, and we spend a lot of time explaining that. We didn't raise your property taxes or anything, and so it's confusing when you don't have to have the public hearings. And by the way, when we do have the public hearings, I think either one person will...
They're not very well attended. I've been to a couple.
So I know, I hope, the effort was to let you know that we are not having the hearings and why, and maybe we confuse you a little bit more, if anything.
I think so. And also, in speaking with the tax, and I'm sorry if I'm confusing you more than necessary here, but in speaking with the tax assessor, we do have some appeals that are still out. I think at the time when we spoke last, it was about 700 that were still pending, and we don't anticipate that they'll all go down. So, there's still, you know, some appeal decisions to be made. So, hopefully we'll experience more of an increase in the digest when this actually is taken to the Department of Revenue for certification in August.
I may need to give you a call, Ms. Alexander.
And you know what? Don't be surprised if we don't figure out how to simplify it a bit more, and she's standing back there at the next meeting explaining it all over.
She's always welcome to come and explain to me.
It'd be so much better when we have numbers to look at.
Pardon?
It looks so much, I think it's easier to, I understand, we have numbers to look at.
Yeah, but, so, we did the best we could today, and maybe we'll think about it some more and take another shot at it, another ten.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me say one more thing about that, Mayor Pertin. The millage rate ordinance for city operations will be on first reading next week, and all these urban service district rates will be plugged into the ordinance. And that, I believe, was advertised today, Ms. Alexander?
Yes.
Just for normal millage rate hearing purposes, there was an ad today in the paper, and the school district has also done a similar notice. The school millage will be on first reading next week also. Once we get their final number, that'll be plugged into their ordinance, but those are required hearings and advertisements have been done for those. But this, this was an additional three hearings that we did not have to have this year, and that's what she was trying to get across tonight.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Sorry.
And the final update should take just a couple of minutes regarding some property in the Liberty District that we are... that we are ready to demo. Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. This is two properties, as the city manager stated, that's in the Liberty District, and I'll go through them individually. The first one is at 823 Eighth Avenue. This particular piece of property was purchased by the city in 2012 as part of the redevelopment efforts in the Liberty District when we were assembling property. This property is directly next to the Liberty Theater. The structure is in disrepair. It has the potential for structural failure at this point. Resolution 75-18 is where council authorized the transfer of the property within the Liberty District to the Development Authority at their request. So once the RFP is completed and they're ready to award the property to an individual, then that will be the time when the property is transferred to the Development Authority. And the preference is that all the property that's being transferred is to be clear and ready for redevelopment. So the reason we're just updating council. This was the property in pink that was transferred to the Development Authority. The property in light green is the Liberty Theater. This property is directly north of the Liberty Theater at 823 Eighth Avenue. And this is just a few pictures of what this property currently looks like. We don't have any from the inside as it's really not structurally sound for us to go inside. But you can see that it's in, excuse me, disrepair at this point. The second property is not one that's being transferred to the Development Authority, but it is a property that's right at the corner of Ninth Street and Eighth Avenue at 800 Ninth Street. This is the building. We're proposing to also demolish that to really clean up that Eighth Avenue corridor as we move forward with the redevelopment of the Liberty District. So just a quick update, we'll be moving forward with the demolition of those two properties and proceeding forward with the Liberty District RFP.
Thank you.
If there's any questions.
I see no questions.
Okay, Mayor Protem, that concludes my agenda. But I would like to share some dates related to council that indicated the interest in possibly a tour of the Mott's Green Plaza area. And I am going to have staff to send three possible dates. And if these dates are not suitable, then you could offer us up some dates that you would want to go down and tour the Mott's Green Plaza area. And we can do all three dates and however many want to show up. You know, you don't all have, we don't, we're not looking for ten council at one time to tour. If it's two or three here, or two or three there, we can do it. But the first one is Friday, June 8th at 2:00 p.m., Monday, June 11th at 1:00 p.m., and Tuesday, June 12th at 2:00 p.m. Of course, we do have a council meeting on June 12th. And if those dates are not good, then if there are other dates that you would like to consider...
Say them again.
For a tour, then we will add or have those dates. Friday, June 8th, 2:00 p.m., Monday, June 11th at 1:00 p.m., and Tuesday, June 12th at 2:00 p.m. When we email those to you, we'll say are other dates that you want to offer up. So Friday, June 8th, 2:00 p.m., Monday, June 11th, 1:00 p.m., Tuesday, June 12th, 2:00 p.m. The tours will begin at the end of the Frank K. Martin Memorial Bridge and will be hosted by Heck Burtishaw and architects and our planning department. And so we will email you those dates. That concludes my agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Madam Mayor Protem and members of council, on the clerk's agenda, have a few items of information. Number one is a memorandum from me advising of upcoming board vacancies on our Board and Family Children Services. Have a temporary street closing application to close Sixth Avenue between Eighth Street and Ninth Street on Friday, June 8th, in connection with the Friendship Baptist Church Vacation Bible School. Have some biographical sketches, biographical sketch of Ms. Sharon Baker. This is a recommendation of the Keep Columbus Beautiful and Mayor Protem has nominated her for the board. Biographical sketch of Ms. Audrey Hollingworth. This is the mayor's nominee for the pension board. Biographical sketch of Mr. Greg Hutchinson. This is the mayor's nominee for the CCB Board of Commissioners. Biographical sketch of Mr. Christopher Smith, Councilor Garrett's nominee for the Building Authority. And biographical sketch of Mr. Dominique Williamson, recommended by Keep Columbus Beautiful and nominated by Counselor Thomas. And we've received correspondence from the House Phil Authority and we will get, confirm those under board appointments. Have a resolution to cancel the July 3th monthly proclamation session.
Move approval.
Action.
Has been proper motion to cancel the July 3rd meeting. Those in favor, is this keyed up? No. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposes. Thank you.
Then I have two resolutions to excuse Counselor Huff from the May 22nd meeting, as well as Counselor Woodson from the May 22nd meeting, and Counselor Huff from the May 29th, consent agenda work session. Motion to approve.
Yes, the proper motion is second. Those three resolutions be approved. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposes. They pass, thank you.
And then we received correspondence from Ms. Beth Harris. Originally, she had submitted her letter of resignation from the Board of Honor due to her candidacy as mayor. Now she is asking that council if they would rescind her resignation.
You can just make a motion to reinstate her from the Board of Honor.
Motion to reinstate her.
This is a proper movement, second, that we reinstate Ms. Harris to the Board of Honors. Any questions, counselor? All those in favor say aye. And opposes. Counselor Huff?
I can't recall. We had, that's just excusing me from the meeting of the 29th. And that's the same day, 22nd, one of the days we had budget meeting.
Right.
We got the 22nd.
That was the 22nd.
We had council and a budget.
Okay, so that came to budget and Ms. Counsel, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
All right, then we also have two resolutions, I'm sorry, have the minutes of various boards can be received.
Madam Minister, proceed. Second.
This is a proper motion and second, members, we receive. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposes.
Then have two resolutions to excuse Counselor Allen and Barnes.
This is a proper movement, second, to excuse Counselor Allen and Barnes from today's meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposes.
And then, well, we can item the Board of Honor. That is a mute item now. On the Board of Water Commissioners, Mr. Sanders Griffin's. These terms will be expiring the end of December.
I'd like to re-nominate Mr. Griffin.
Okay. We'll bring it back at our next meeting for confirmation, Counselor Davis. Then on the Building Authority, Counselor Garrett is nominating Mr. Christopher Smith. And we will bring this back on next week for confirmation. On the Columbus Aquatics Commission, Ms. Sally Bradley is not interested in serving another term. Council will need to nominate someone else for this seat. Mr. Rick Cravens has been re-nominated and can be confirmed.
Confirmation.
Second.
Has been proper movement, second, confirmation, Mr. Cravens. All those in favor say aye. And opposes. Thank you.
And then Mr. Wes Kelly, he is interested if someone wants to nominate him. All right, and we'll bring this back next week. On the Community Development Advisory Council, we need a nominee for District 3. Ms. Kendall is not eligible to succeed herself, as well as Mr. Don Cook for District 6. I'm sorry.
Grandma.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
On my nominee for District 3, I will get that for you. But I just wanted to, on the airwaves, say condolences to... I had a nominee for you today that passed last week. And I just wanted to offer condolences to his wife personally. And I will get you another name by next week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then on our Comprehensive Plan Stakeholders Committee, we need someone for this District 10 at large. On the Convention and Visitors Board of Commissioners, Ms. Mary Ann Richter, this term will be expiring the end of December. State law says that they need to be appointed in July. She is interested if someone wants to re-nominate her.
That's the mayor's appointee.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. That is the mayor's nominee. Also, Ms. Shelley Dean's term will be expiring. The mayor is nominating Mr. Greg Hutchinson.
Mm-hmm.
Second.
No, not since it's the mayor's appointee. Right.
That is correct because it's the mayor's nominee. We can go ahead and confirm.
This is a proper movement, second, to nominate Mr. Greg Hutchinson. All those in favor say aye. And opposes.
And also Ms. Allison Cox-Rittenberg. The mayor is working on an appointment. Well, she's interested and we'll see if the mayor wants to re-nominate her. Then on our Cooperative Extension Advisory Board, Vanessa Lewis has resigned. Will need a replacement for that seat. On the Hospital Authority, we have received correspondence from the authority. They have selected Ms. Verona Campbell to succeed Mr. James Webster, Mr. John Kinsbury to succeed Mr. Edward Gaffney. They are re-appointing Ms. Cynthia Williams-John and Mr. Ernest Smallwin, as well as Ms. Betty Tatum. Can I get a motion for confirmation?
Motion for confirmation.
Yes, a proper motion and second, confirmation on the Hospital Authority. All those in favor say aye. And opposes.
And the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, Mr. Dominique Williamson has been nominated. He can be confirmed.
Move confirmation.
Yes, the proper motion is second, Mr. Williamson. All those in favor say aye. And opposes.
And Ms. Karen Henderson is not eligible to succeed herself. The commission is working on a recommendation to council. Mr. Larry Derby has been nominated to succeed Ms. Christine Consalletti. He can be confirmed.
Move confirmation.
This is a proper motion and second, Mr. Derby. All those in favor say aye. And opposes.
Ms. Sharon Baker has been nominated by Mayor Protem to succeed Ms. Wanda Johnson Jenkins. She can...
Second.
Yes, been proper motion and second, Ms. Baker. All those in favor say aye. And opposes.
And Ms. Courtney Lachlan is recommending the reappointment of Ms. Lachlan if someone wants to re-nominate her.
Aye.
Okay. On our Liberty District Advisory Committee, we still need a recommendation for District 4, 5...
Gladys Ford.
Gladys Ford, okay. Can I get a motion for confirmation?
Confirmation.
Second.
Yes, a proper motion and second, Ms. Ford be confirmed. All those in favor say aye.
You did yours last week.
And opposes.
And also District 5 and 7. On the Pension Board, the mayor is nominating Ms. Audrey Hollingsworth. She can be confirmed.
Confirmation.
Yes, the motion is second, confirmation of Ms. Hollingsworth. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposes.
And then on our Personal Review Board, Mr. Keith Weeks has resigned. Council will need to nominate someone for that seat. On the Tree Board, Dr. Roger Brown and Ms. Cassie Renfro. We still need a recommendation for these two seats. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor Protem.
Just a short executive session requested for litigation.
It's council pleasure.
Yes. Move we go into executive session?
Yes, the motion is second, we go into executive session. All those in favor say aye. And opposes. We're now going to executive session. Thank you, we're back into regular session. We've just come out of executive session and no votes were taken. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, we call up one add-on resolution. This would be a settlement with the Environmental Protection Agency on the Stormwater Management Program in the amount of $56,340. And it is ready for adoption.
Yes, the proper motion is second of the adoption. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
No.
And opposes.
All right. That does pass and that's all we have, Mayor Protem.
All those in favor for adjournment say aye. We adjourn.